Michael.
Good morning, it is nine o'clock. I will call the meeting to order.
Betty made me number for all checks. Very nice.
Yeah, the tentative agenda before you, the only correction is on item eight. Uh, the resolution number is actually uh forty dash forty-three instead of dash forty-two.
And the other item I'd like to change is that work session on public health, I'm meeting with them after the meeting. Cause I wanna go through all what they want to do or what's going on with it.
Right, right, yeah, it sounds good.
So.
So no work.
I don't.
No.
He was, he was part of the committee and he hasn't been briefed yet, so I.
I am the committee, so I wanna take.
Is there any reason that we can't uh attend that since it was on the agenda?
No, you can come over with, I wanna go over and see what they're doing.
Okay.
That's my, I can't.
You want you to go over the stuff, yeah.
If you want to, that'd be awesome, but we'll do it right after the meeting.
As stated on the agenda.
Well, it'll be over at Public Health where it go, it won't be part of the agenda.
It is on the agenda. And we will hold it over at the Public Health.
Sure.
Meeting, okay. Do I have a motion to approve the as corrected?
Second.
I have a motion as second to approve the agenda as corrected, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried, Betty, if you'd read the minutes of the December fourth meeting.
For four twenty twenty-three, chairman Puths called the regular meeting of the Wright County Board of Supervisors order at nine AM. Members present were Foose, Rasmussen, and Helgavold. Motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Helgavold to approve the tentative agenda, motion carries. Minutes of the previous regular meeting of November twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three were read and approved with corrections. Approved claims from for payment. Bob Ritter spoke in open forum thanking the board for making the planning and zoning minutes public on the website. Uh, motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Helgavold to pay for the medical examiner investigator registration and meeting expense for John Niss and motion carries. Kelly Corkhill, deputy assessor presented sixteen new family farm applications for ten different landowners. Motion by Helgavold, seconded by Rasmussen to go with the assessor's recommendation to allow the family farm tax credit application, motion carries. Um, Jeremy Abbas, assistant to the Wright County engineer, presented the final plans for FMCO ninety-two ninety-nine dash one oh four dash fifty-five dash ninety-nine on C thirty-two west of Goldfield and on R thirty-three for one mile by Woolstock. The plan will consist of a one-inch mill and a two-inch layer of asphalt. With permission from the Iowa DOT, the job will go up uh to highway seventeen right away and also their radius. This project will go out for bid on February twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Helgavold to approve the final plans for project CO ninety-nine parentheses one oh four dash fifty-five dash ninety-nine. Resurfacing with milling of C thirty-two west of Goldfield, the highway seventeen and R thirty-three to the county line on White Fox Road by Woolstock, motion carries. Abbas gave an update on secondary roads, crews are working on brush cutting in the right of way. Completing Boone Township last week and will move to Liberty Township this week. There will be um orange snow fences being put up where trouble issues occur in the winter months. Trucks are helping with brush cutting on granular routes and burning ditches in preparation for winter. Open the bids for the cash rent of the Wright County Farm southeast of Clarion for two hundred fifty-seven tillable acres. There were ten bids submitted and they are as follows. Greg Shapool, three hundred eleven dollars, Southern Farms Inc., three sixty-five, Larissa Flagey, three sixty-five, Nate Huntley, three hundred dollars. Troy Watney, three hundred fifty-one dollars, Kevin Burris, four hundred twenty-eight dollars and one cent. Greg Stein, three hundred twelve dollars, Dane Askelson, two hundred eighty-five dollars, Nicholas Christensen, three hundred and fifteen dollars. And Matt Seifker, 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 three hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Pus will contact the winner of the highest bid. Rebecca Barrett and James Marland with the Department of Corrections, Second Judicial District gave an update, the district covers twenty-two counties, they currently have sixty clients. Fifty males, ten females in Wright County. Since twenty twenty, they have made treatment virtual to the clients to do from their homes. Currently, the Second Judicial District has one hundred sixty-five beds for males and sixteen beds for females for the, a total of uh one hundred and eighty-one beds in the three locations, which is Mason City, Fort Dodge, and Marshalltown. The daily cost for institution is a hundred and seven dollars. And the daily cost for probation slash parole is seven dollars. There was a sixty-two percent success rate of probation discharges in fiscal year two thousand nineteen and seventy-seven percent success rate of probation discharges in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Motion by Helgavold, seconded by Rasmussen to during the meeting, motion carries. The board will hold a closed session at ten AM acting as drainage trustees concerning the railroad repair issue in DD thirty-six with drainage attorney David Johnson.
Okay, uh, if you would just check. The dinner number eight and seven, I believe that those two are reversed. Uh, I don't know that and I don't have, I didn't take notes, but if you would just check that, please.
Okay.
Are there any uh additions or corrections other than the one uh asked for clarification? Hearing none, it will stand through. Um, did you get ahold of Kevin? Uh, I did speak to him, yes, and he has, uh, I have signed the lease and it has been sent to him. Right, yeah. But I did contact him by phone. Okay, uh, claims for payments uh have been around. I think there were four signatures.
Five.
Five. Uh, item number five, open forum for public input. You guys are here for the library board, correct? Okay, hearing um. Uh, item number six, receive the monthly revenue report from the Wright County Sheriff. Welcome, uh, November. Ending November thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, uh. County car service fees and mileage, uh, two thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars and three cents. County new and renew weapons permits, three hundred and sixty dollars and copying fees of a hundred and seven dollars for a total of two thousand six hundred and three dollars and three cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Oh, motion uh in a second to accept the Wright County Sheriff's uh report for November, the month of November, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Um, motion carried. Item number seven, safety committee, uh, consider resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-two resolution of public purpose for safety training kind of incentives. This is a resolution that is required um by our auditor uh in order to um provide incentives for employees uh that participate in the wellness uh program.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to um approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-two, a resolution of public purpose. Uh, public purpose for safety trends. Um, all those are by roll call, both Carl.
Aye.
Rick.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
Motion carried.
We have two signatures on those, I need, I mean, two signed resolutions, please.
You need one of them, one of them.
Yeah. Our auditing firm has requested resolution of public purposes. Anytime we expend money, um, cause we can't, we can't have gifts, we can't. Anything will be like two dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Yeah, like we're gonna get on with that.
Yeah, so this is uh for the, the employees that are for the employees that are um doing their safety trainings and.
I said, I think I said wellness.
Yeah, yeah. And they um have to, are expected to attend the trainings. And some of them may last a half day or even more, but uh it has helped with our um IMWC for our, our safety. Um. Being injured, employees are thinking first before just doing stuff, so.
It saves us on injuries because they're thinking about the stuff they've had to go through. So they don't get injured as much as they normally would have.
Okay, uh, item number eight. Uh, is with the wellness committee, this is consideration of losing twenty twenty-three dash forty-three, a resolution of public purpose for the wellness program incentives. Again, uh, same thing only for the wellness uh program participation.
Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three forty-three.
Second.
Have a motion as second to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-three, a resolution of public purpose for recognition of wellness by roll call, both Carl.
Aye.
Rick.
Aye.
Dean.
Aye.
Motion carried. You also.
Yes, please. I need another forty-two. Cause Rick handed him forty-three.
Well, fine, Carl, give up your forty-two.
You got my forty-three?
I didn't even get a forty-three.
You did, you handed it to him, he seemed it, so good, you did, it's all good.
And this is more for incentive on our our physicals that we take to help save us money on our insurance through ISAC, am I not correct?
Correct, yes.
And that takes us how much life?
Last year was about eighty-six thousand savings.
It is seventy, hang on a second, I'll say seventy-four thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-five cents.
It's a big number. Big number.
You, give me that number again.
Seventy-four thousand five hundred and fourteen and eighty-five cents.
And next week we'll roll out next year's program.
Okay, so that's our five percent discount, which is the greatest discount that you can receive.
And we've received that for what, three years in a row now?
Yep.
And I, more than that, but I really appreciate everybody that participates in that, that it saves us from having to raise your rates that you pay, cause we still pay regardless of something. And it helps out financially for the county as far as our insurance payment. Thank you.
Okay, item number nine. Oh. Jeremy, are you here for us?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Jeremy Abbas, uh, assistant to the Wright County engineer on the security roads, okay.
Hey, quick update from last week, um. Our main goal's been cut and brushing and that sort of same, our blades are out ditch. Words still ditch burning last Monday and Tuesday with the low winds. Um, cut and brushing greater routes and then blading when able to. Trucks are brush cutting as well, uh, right now we completed four townships on the west side of the county, so we're gonna come across and at this rate, we're gonna if we keep snow off the ground, we're, we're gonna have a pretty clean county here very shortly, so.
Excellent.
Uh, work orders fifty-four, forty-seven, we're brush cutting fiber service on the sheriff's office and then we had placed that manual snow fence up. All right, that's what we got, uh, engineer and myself, we'll be gone at engineers conference this week after tomorrow, so.
Okay. That's in Cedar Rapids.
Good morning.
Morning.
Okay, that's all I got.
I mentioned Adam on the brush cutting, if you can get this for some spark entrance there.
Yep, Derek talked with the super dad this morning, he's very big there, that's wonderful, thank you.
Okay, item number ten, review the health insurance letter from Ohio State Association of Counties concerning health insurance rates for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. I believe that letter is the letter that or do you have a different letter, Betty?
Um. So did I hand you um one that looks like this? Okay. I wanted you I did not make enough copies.
You don't need one.
Can you take a break for two seconds?
Yeah, you wanted this, okay, that'd be fine, absolutely.
Do you meetings?
For me?
Wanted you meetings?
Sure.
I didn't have any, but district. But our supervisor meeting in Charles City, that Carl is in charge of did a very well job.
Well, we had uh six uh legislators there, a good question.
Two senators, four representatives.
Eminent domain was quite the topic and uh and about thirty-five or forty people show up, other supervisors, so I was like for a sec or another term, so I'll be president of that district for two more years.
Yeah, it was a good meeting, it's good to have the senators there, it was really good to have the senator that served on that subcommittee concerning eminent domain.
It shows there's definitely brought to the floor, right, if there's definitely, there's people that want it there, but yet it, the leadership is blocking it, you can definitely tell that.
Yeah, it's the wall. It amazes me. But what really amazes me is that that is not known to the general public, you know, uh. It just shouldn't uh the state congress shouldn't operate in that.
When leadership gets in control.
Yeah, yeah. Uh. Any other meetings?
No, I'm coming development tomorrow morning, okay.
I have the Midas meeting on Wednesday afternoon um over in Fort Dodge, the big issue there was uh some bus passes for um for uh kids whose folks work and they are not eligible to be picked up by the cities, by the schools buses because of the distance that they live, the proximity that they live uh to the school. Um. Uh. And Dart is going to, or Midas is going to uh underwrite uh fifty percent of the cost. But our Dart buses make a planned route, so it doesn't change the cost to Midas to operate the buses, it just allows these students to um to utilize those city buses um in order to get to school.
So sixty-four passes.
Yeah, sixty-four passes, exactly. Um, and then on the Thursday, I had a uh Zoom meeting for uh CFR. Um. And there was nothing significant to report on that. Okay. Uh. Review the health insurance, uh, again, item number ten, review the health insurance letter from Iowa State Association of Counties concerning the health insurance rates for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Betty, you guys have plugged evidently the numbers into this.
Correct. So we received the letter um from ISAC and it is saying that on the single plan it's going up five point six five percent. So it would have looked way different had we not followed our wellness program. And the family percent change is going to be five point seven four, so uh five and a half or not. So. So yeah, and it, and like you said, we had a five percent discount for doing our safety wellness, so that was a good thing. Um, so that the colored sheet that I gave you, the top portion is the twenty-three, twenty-four, that's the year we're currently fiscally in.
Correct.
The top, the bottom is the uh potential rates that you need to consider. Um, the health insurance on the bottom box on the left. Um, family health insurance is going to be one thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars for a family plan.
That's a bull.
That is per month, however, that per month cost is a five thousand dollar deductible. So we buy the higher deductible. And then we use, we partially self-fund ourselves. And that's what the side fund is for, is to buy that down to a five hundred dollar deductible or a seven hundred and fifty dollar deductible or a thou- thousand dollar deductible, whatever the employee decides they'd like to have. And so the side fund contribution then, uh, we're recommending, um, cause we, I've, ever since we started the I started here, I've kept track of the side fund and we need to continue funding it. Um, costs are going up, so I think we need to increase it uh another ten dollars, so that will be up to from three hundred and ninety dollars to the side fund is up to four hundred dollars.
And again, that's the employees' cost or contribution to the side fund.
No, that is, that is, the county is putting that into the side fund to help buy down, it's the.
General basic for.
It, uh, all of it's out as supplemental. It's all out of the supplement, yeah, and that's what helps buy down those deductibles, so if you were to add uh one thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars plus the four hundred dollars, that's your premium for a family plan.
True.
The same thing goes with a single plan is seven hundred and eighty-six dollars. And then the side fund contribution is two hundred and twenty dollars for the single plan.
Yeah.
Um, dental is, we are self-funding um dental now ourselves through and using and utilizing Oxyant, so um we can kind of control the, the costs a little bit because we're totally self-funding ourselves for dental. Um, life insurance hasn't changed that, and then of course the admin costs for uh utilizing Oxyant. And is there an admin cost?
And that life insurance is, uh, you have to opt out, right? I mean, everybody gets it, you have to specifically opt out.
Yes, which is not.
No.
Why you do that, yeah. So, um, then the employee portion that the employee will pay out of pocket is you take the family plan health insurance minus the single plan health insurance. Multiply that by twenty-five percent. And that is the amount the employee pays out of pocket, so that is going up uh thirteen dollars with it from last year.
And that ain't bad, no.
No, it's not bad at all. And that is the uh kind of the ba- burgundy colored pink, hot pink, so then the cost to the county is actual cost for everything, health insurance and dental and everything is two thousand seven dollars and twenty-four cents for a family plan and one thousand eight dollars fifty-two cents for a single plan.
True. We're good, any other questions concerning that?
Um, the other thing was, it looks like um, I don't know what you want to do with the employee, for the employees' cost for a single plan. Um, you upped it to fifty dollars last year. Um, I don't know if you want to up it a little bit again or just leave it, that was the other question we had.
What up it, does that contribute to the cost in the, does that go into the side fund?
No, it's just a, a savings to the county, general supplemental.
Yeah. Still seems awful cheap to me, I mean, I would not, uh.
Even going up five or ten dollars wouldn't be bad, just gradually kind of getting it up there.
Rick, your thoughts?
I think it needs to go up, yes, that's pretty cheap.
Yeah.
Okay, so uh can we put that on the agenda um for next week to take action on that?
Did you kind of plug it in on yours, Betty, like a five dollar increase is what you did?
Yeah, yeah, just to see what it would look like and what the numbers would be.
Good.
And that's, I mean, you, you can pick any number you want, we we're kind of, so that, that's kind of a food for thought, no action has to be done today, it was just to, to look at it and put it out there.
Well, they've had worse years for insurance, it isn't that.
All right, thank you. Um. For the time of that, so we've done meetings.
We'll keep that in our budget pack, right?
We'd be in recess uh until uh nine twenty-nine. It'd be in recess uh until uh nine twenty-nine. Okay, we are back in session uh nine-thirty, Wright County Lib- or not, yeah, Wright County uh libraries giving their annual update and request for continued funding. Uh when you slide underneath that table, be careful.
Watch your knees.
We need your grace.
Might pass out.
What are these, each of you, so you have it?
Read it all to you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's true.
Yep.
Well, morning.
Morning.
Uh again, hello, everybody. I'm uh pretty sure we all know each other, but for the record, I'm Chad Chapman. I'm currently the board president at the Clarion Public Library uh Board of Directors. I'm here to speak uh I'm here to speak and speak on you, speak you on behalf of all five libraries in the Wright County and all their respective boards. Uh first of all, I want to take uh time to thank you for your busy schedules to accommodate us. I know you, it's you your time is as valuable as ours, so we'll try to keep this short. Also, another thanks to all of you for your past and future support. You really are key players in what uh we do for our communities. I could easily sit here and load you up with facts and figures about previous years, but I have given you a document with that information already. Libraries have always been and continue to be great resources for the people, resources for the people in the community, whether it be from checking out materials, renting room out for a community event, or just a warm, safe, safe place to hang out on a cold winter's day. In many cases, there are also somewhat of an untapped resource of these items. Fortunately, for all of, for all of us residents, the tax monies you provide help us to keep all those options functioning and help us advertise them. In the past year, some have used the funds to purchase a smart TV, large print books for their aging patrons, uh an electronic gaming table, supplies for activity, activities and more. Speaking of activities, just to name a few, here are some examples. All of our uh uh libraries have regular children programs um which often include bringing professionals in from zoos, colleges and such, uh crafts for children, book clubs for adults. Belmont has a regular trivia night, summer reading programs for children, uh science programs uh and Lego building parties. List goes on. If you haven't already, I encourage you to go check out all their local uh local libraries, social media pages. There really is a lot going on in in our county. Uh so with that, though, some of these items are relatively inexpensive. They all require money and not to mention just the regular operating costs of the libraries. All five libraries, directors and boards met on Monday, November second for training, or excuse me, met on November second for training. The library update, the library updates and a proposal uh we came with to bring you. For this year's budget, we are asking you to consider a four percent increase over last year's funding in the amount of one hundred and forty thousand eight hundred and ninety-one dollars plus the additional five thousand uh dollars. Uh that's a thousand for every library for that tech and uh that technology. That's been really nice. It's earmarked for that, and it only goes to that, so um again, thank you for your ongoing support. We appreciate all your work. Um those facts are right there, so I remember in the past, you guys have been trying to quickly write them down, so I thought I did bring them to you.
So appreciate that.
Yeah, uh make it easier. So um we have some people here from um like Belmont, Clarion and uh Rowan, if you guys have questions, I'm sure they probably have better answers than I do. Um if not, I'm, you know, you know how to get ahold of me, so um I'd be glad to answer anything you have at this time, otherwise, that's just what we got.
Any questions?
Is your uh people using the library still continue to go up or how?
Yeah, you know, the COVID thing dropped down, which we still accommodated as best we could, but um the numbers are still looking pretty darn good. I mean, you can, especially like internet traffic, you know, you think most people have internet at home, but uh they have software and stuff that they can go on and see how many people, different people logged on, regular people have logged on. Um some do it from the parking lot. Sometimes there are people that are passing through that just need a better internet connection for a little while too, so I admit I've done that in other states myself, so um but yeah, it's looking really good, so.
Very good. Uh we'll start our well, we've received some of our budget packets uh already, um but we will definitely uh take this into consideration when we're working on the budget.
And you guys usually set that, when is it the?
Uh uh January, this year we've, we're meeting January seventh and eighth, I think it is.
Tenth and eleventh.
Tenth and eleventh. Okay, um and we typically have answers for groups, but we have to have it finalized by maybe fifteenth?
Eight, thirteen.
Yeah, last year was kind of strange.
Okay, Tuesday and Wednesday.
So finalized in the night, yeah.
Very good.
Thank you, thank you very much.
And I'll, and I'll send that letter out again. I I send writing letters out.
Yep, yep, appreciate that.
And I'll do that as soon as they have something locked in.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a staff member with her for all the permission to align the ring with cases ever used for emergency management or public health, if we needed it or.
We can definitely get that for you. So so are you talking about like the director of each library at the end or the whole of the board or just just the director?
Yeah, whoever would be able to have access. Like today is Saturday, we needed to have a warming shelter, we need to move people there temporarily or something.
Yeah, yeah, we can definitely get that.
We can.
Join our public health or do the
They can send it to me.
Yep. Yep, only can I mean, gather that.
Any other business? Yep. Well, completes our agenda. I would accept a motion to adjourn, recognizing that uh uh we'll be going over to the public health building to look at uh um proposed remodeling uh after the adjournment of the meetings. I'll make a note.
Sorry.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. We are adjourned.